Hello, can I do a sound check? Mr. Demikoff, do you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Mrs. Wright?
I can hear you.
Mr. Phytros?
Yes, I can hear you.
Mr. Vercelli?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you very much.
So will Nancy take? No, no, no problem. So she'll be the board secretary acting so. I'd like to open up the meeting by saluting the flag. Good evening, everyone.
Roll call?
Yes, ma'am.
Are we doing a motion to open public?
Roll call first, please.
Mr. Phytros?
Here.
Mr. Gibbons?
Here.
Mr. Gomes?
Here.
Mrs. McNeil?
Here.
Dr. Martinez?
Here.
Mrs. Orth?
Here.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Vercelli?
Here.
Mr. Cathcart?
Here.
President Martinez? President Fernandez, I apologize.
Here.
Also present, Dr. Barry Haines, Acting Superintendent, Mrs. Nancy Loyakono, Assistant Business Administrator, Mr. Wayne Demikoff, State Monitor, and Carrie Wright, Board Attorney. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right to the public of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Ridgefield Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, place thereof posted in the Bergen Record Municipal Building Board of Education offices and the district website. Public participation will be conducted both in person and virtually through Zoom. All public will be muted throughout the meeting. Public participation comments are limited to five minutes. The public will be able to both speak and be seen by the board when participating virtually, telephonically via Zoom. Individuals participating virtually that wish to make comments during the public participation will need to raise their hand by clicking the blue hands icon at the bottom of their Zoom window. Individuals participating by phone that wish to make comments during the public participation will need to hit star nine on their telephone to raise their hand. The Business Administrator Board Secretary will then unmute individuals one at a time to speak in the order that their hand was raised.
Thank you, Nancy. Yes, moving on to minutes, I'd like to pass on the minutes for the May 4th and May 18th meeting. A second.
Any comments or questions regarding the minutes dated May 4th and May 18th, 2022? Seeing none? Mr. Phytros?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Dr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Vercelli?
Yes.
Mr. Cathcart?
Yes.
And President Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Moving on to communications.
President Fernandez, I have a communications. I'm very excited to share from the Memorial Day Ceremony that many of our students attended and actually performed at, a letter from the Veterans of Foreign Wars in support and gratitude towards Mr. Leo Lucci, who was the choir director who had volunteers sing that day, as follows. "As Memorial Day Masters of Ceremonies, I would like to thank you, the Royal Scarlet's Chorus, and you for the outstanding performance in our Memorial Day Ceremony. This day is in memory of all veterans who have passed. Having youth involvement and understanding the history of our nation is something that cannot be forgotten. We are looking forward for this participation to continue. These students should be entitled to community service hours for their voluntary performance, and please contact me if you need any additional documentation. Respectfully, Robert Carlson, Commander." I'd also like to say, there were a few members of the Board of Education who worked really hard to make sure that we had student representation and community involvement at this service, and I was also there and proud to be a part of the proceedings.
Moving on to reports, faculty and programs, with trustee Rodriguez.
The Faculty and Programs Committee met on June 13, 2022. The Acting Superintendent, Dr. Barry Haines, trustee, Dr. Ricardo Martinez, myself, President George Fernandez, trustee Chris Gibbons, and trustee Michelle Orth were all in attendance. We discussed the need for a math coach, and also, we discussed the continuation of CONCOR Math Training PD for our staff this summer of 2022. Also, the pacing guide revision, summer curriculum writing, and continue to work on the Social Justice Committee, and hopefully look at a broader range of books. We will also use Fidelity Consultant. We discuss how we can support our students in college selection prior to their junior, senior year to broaden our horizons on schools. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the subcommittee, Social Justice, Ricardo, trustee Martinez.
We have not met officially since the last time. However, in speaking with Dr. Haines about recent hires, I do notice a good, positive change of focus where we're hiring individuals from really all over the country with various experiences and backgrounds, languages spoken, all different types of backgrounds, but I think is a good move for the district.
Thank you so much. Moving on to Buildings and Grounds, trustee Cathcart.
Buildings and Grounds meet Tuesday night. We discussed the open lines of communication in the district. We also discussed projects to be completed this year and into 2023.
Thank you so much. Moving on to Finance and Insurance, trustee Gomes.
The Finance Committee did not meet since our last meeting was canceled. We do plan to meet before the next board meeting.
Thank you so much. Personnel, trustee Gibbons?
Yes, the Personnel Committee met on June 6th and June 13th to discuss the new hires that were going to be brought in and future prospective positions to be hired and to be discussed in the district in the future.
Thank you so much. Negotiations, trustee Vercelli?
Negotiations, we're still trying to lock down a meeting date, which I think is imperative that we do, coming up with the RPSI.
Thank you so much. Last but not least, policy, trustee Martinez?
We have not met since the last meeting, but we do have a meeting scheduled for this coming week.
All right, thank you. That concludes our committee reports. Moving along to the superintendent's report.
I think people will be very excited to hear tonight that I do not have a slideshow. Instead, there are two student presentations. I'd like to introduce Ms. Thiemann and Tony Nunzio for the first presentation.
Good evening, Ms. Thiemann. Good evening, Mr. Nunzio.
Good evening, everyone. This is one of those presentations that I can tell you is near and dear to my heart. Tony Nunzio, as Tony chooses to be referred to, is Victoria Nunzio. Tony presented an outstanding drawing for the Bergen County Stigma Free Contest. This is a contest that Richel Park has entered for many, many years, and this is the first time that we can say proudly that we have an honorable mention in this contest. Tony's work was inspired by Mr. Galosso's and Passion Plea to make sure that we had a representation at the Bergen County Stigma Free Contest. Tony is an exceptional student who truly embodies everything we would want a middle school student to be. Tony is kind, caring, compassionate, and leads by example. Tony is a student who, as all of you know, my Instagram post is always about being hashtag proud principal. I am so unbelievably proud of you, Tony, and I would just like if we could just take a look at Tony's artwork. Tony mentioned that he used the chains for breaking through the emotion that he was feeling. The chains that hold us all in a dark corner of any The chains that hold us all in a dark corner of any stigma that we face. Tony is our honorable mention for Bergen County Stigma Free.
Ms. Thiemann and Tony, if it's okay with you, we'd like to get a board picture of your accomplishment with your poster, please.
Continue with the Superintendent's Report.
Yes, so the second presentation that I have, I happen to be proudly present for Georgie as he was presented in Bergen County and recognized as our Valedictorian of the Year. So, George, I'd ask you to come up and address the board. George, I believe, is also the President of our Student Council, so he's here serving two roles tonight. He's presenting, but he's also, as a member of the Student Council, representing our Student Council and our school.
Oh, good evening. My name is Georgie, and I am again representing for Student Council as Senior Class President. Before we give a list of our recent events and other exciting school news, I would like to also announce that I am this year's Valedictorian and will be a reflection on my time here.
Congratulations, George.
I have been a student of the Ridgefield Park School District since the first grade and would like to show my gratitude to the Board of Education for their work now and work throughout my adolescent years. You've provided me and my fellow classmates with tremendous opportunities, opportunities to take part in a multitude of clubs and activities, AP and do enrollment courses, and a competitive and passionate sports program. In addition, I also appreciate the school's strong emphasis on the other aspects of education, such as its premier arts and business programs, inclusion of fulfilling and diverse courses, including surprisingly, an aviation's class and many more. Additionally, I also appreciate the availability of our new school therapist whom I've been able to build a great connection and relationship with. I can reflect on and appreciate my experience here and the relationships I have developed with my past and present teachers, principals, school staff, and other administration, some of which have been of great impact to whom I will become and who I am right now. Now leaving, I can say that I am graduating with a sense of belonging and community from our school and town. With my last few days of high school coming upon me, I overall feel that I am graduating with a well-rounded education and upbringing, and I'm aptly prepared for the world and college in the near future. Thank you.
George, were you attending Boston College?
Yeah, Boston College.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
George, this is also a photo op because the board is very proud of your accomplishments, too, so we're going to take a photo with you.
And then I just have a few announcements that are the recent happenings of our school and Student Council. So, to name a few of the exciting things happening in RPHS, I will start with trips. Our eighth grade graders are going to Six Flags on Friday, while seventh graders just went to the Tenafly Nature Preserve these last two days. Ninth and tenth grade also attended Six Flags last week, and the seniors gear up to go to Woodlock this Friday. The Junior-Senior Prom was a classy event at The Grove, and our eighth graders also attended their eighth grade formal last week. It was nice for all to dress up and enjoy a social night out. We had our dance club debut performance with Mrs. Butler, and highlights of the night can be seen on the high school Instagram account. Additionally, the National Honor Society induction occurred before the senior class was honored with their academic and athletic scholarships this month. Finally, I would like to announce this year's student garment gift to the high school and community. With our fundraising efforts, this year, the student government has decided to purchase mile markers and a map for the trail that begins here on East Grand Avenue and ends on Emerson Street. In the coming days, we will work in conjunction with the TVW to install them. Thank you.
George, thank you again, and we're wishing you the best in Boston. Let us know if you need us to come visit sometime. Closing out the Superintendent Report. There's been a lot of discussion on personal item number 282. My understanding of the history of that item is it is incorrectly titled. So, as the Superintendent, I am suggesting the title of P282 changed to Quality Control and Equipment Volunteer. That concludes my Superintendent Report. Yeah, there is another change to FP183 to Acting Superintendent, correct?
Yes.
All yours.
Moving on to the Monitor's Report. Mr. Demikoff?
Tonight, I will read into the record a letter received from the Acting Commissioner dated May 15, 2022, which will be attached to the minutes of this meeting, which states, it's dated May 15, 2022, it's addressed to Dr. Barry Haines, Acting Superintendent, Mr. George Fernandez, President. Dear Dr. Haines and Mr. Fernandez, I am writing to inform you that I am extending the contract of Mr. Wayne Demikoff to serve as State Monitor in the Ridgefield Park School District effective May 15, 2022 through May 15, 2023. We see the enclosed contract. If you have any questions, please contact Scott Henry, Director Office of State Monitors, and is signed by Angelica Allen McMillan, Acting Commissioner. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Moving on to citizens' comments on agenda items.
Janet Malul, please.
Before we start, can we have the statement by regarding our policy on comments? On and off agenda items, please.
Thank you, George. Good evening. Before we begin public comment, as the Chair of the Policy Committee, I want to remind everyone that we'll continue to have two public comment periods, one on agenda and one off agenda items. There's a sign-up sheet on the podium. We will call your name in the order that you sign in. Each member of the public will have five minutes to speak during each comment period. Time cannot be transferred to other individuals. The public comment period will be one hour for on agenda items and one hour for non-agenda items. Thank you for your cooperation and support.
Good evening, Janet. How are you?
I'm good. Janet Malul, 163 East Grand Avenue. I actually spent time printing this whole thing out and going through it. My first question is on, I don't know which agenda this thing is. I guess it's just starting out from the beginning of Order of Business, that page going forward.
Yes, ma'am.
It's page 11, F I 308.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, first, I'm wondering what this person's qualifications are. In other words, what do they do that would make this the person that should be evaluating Dr. Haines?
Okay, no problem. I would pass this question on to Mrs. Wright, if you don't mind.
Okay. Sure, I'm happy to answer that question. Kim Harrington served as the Commissioner of Education. She's got a wealth of educational background and experience. She served as the Commissioner of Education, I believe, under Chris Christie, but I'm not entirely certain of that, and she now performs consulting across the state. So, she's definitely qualified to evaluate a Director of Curriculum Instruction and Operations.
Okay, that explains why when I looked her up, I couldn't find her. Looking up Marcus, she's under Harrington, is what she would.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so she has, yep. So, Kimberly Harrington was her name when she was the Commissioner of Education, and yeah, that's why.
Okay, just, I guess a comment in all fairness to Dr. Haines, I'm not so sure how it's totally fair to review his performance as Director of Curriculum Instruction and Operations when he was asked to do two major jobs. So, I really don't know how they're going to evaluate him in that sense, but I'm just throwing it out there. Because pretty much within months of coming here, he was thrown into an Assistant Superintendent's position above and beyond, and my understanding is several of the facets of his original job that he's hired for have been kind of spread out in order to make, holding two jobs that really should be done by two people. You know, work.
Right, not diving too much into the personnel part, but this was a recommendation by the majority of the board to have this.
Okay, I mean, I'm not saying don't, I'm just saying, I'm just curious how that will play out as far as, you know, with the situation he was put into.
Of course.
See, Dr. Haines, I can be fair to your times. Okay, then it gets to, I'm looking at pages three and four. A lot of changes going on. People leaving, people taking place. And what I'm curious about, and if you're not in education, you may not really know this, but when people are moving, if you're putting somebody in on a Step 4 MA, that basically usually translates to the fact that the fourth year would have been the year they had tenure. So, why would you move, you, three years, and usually the first day, your fourth year, you're tenured, unless Jersey is doing things differently now. Okay, so, we've got one at Step 4 MA. We've got another one at 4 MA, actually, there are a couple, I think, at 4 MA. There was one, I believe, at 4 BA, so I'm a little curious about that. And the other pieces, we got a few that are eight years in. Most educators do not leave a district they're in, unless they're really moving from one district to a phenomenal position in another, or a district that pays like twice what they're making. So, it's also my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that when you make a move like that, you now have two years before you're given tenure in that new district, or that has changed? One year, four years?
No, it's four years. If you change districts, you're back to zero. It's four years.
You're back to zero.
You're back to zero.
Okay, so that's another piece, to put eight years in in a district and then take the chance of coming to a new district, I just find it a little curious. The P282, what exactly does a quality control and equipment person do? I don't, I'm not a football person, so I don't know what that really means. Like, what type of connection would there be? I'm asking because according to New Jersey School Boards Association about volunteering, essentially from what I've gotten from this, if a board member is volunteering for, let's say, to chaperone a trip, or to do a read-a-thon for a day, or things of that nature where they're not every day in touch with children and staff, it's acceptable. But there's some question about generally prohibited are volunteer activities in which a board member would be subject to supervision management, and it goes on and on, and it says, these would include, but not limited to, volunteer coaches, volunteer club advisors, volunteer cafeteria playground aides, and other similar activities. So, I'm trying to get a handle on what this position actually means.
I understand.
I can, I'll speak to the history as far as I know about this position, because I was one of the people that brought it up as being a conflict, the football coach position. And as I understand it, this position will keep the individual who happens to be a board member from straying into those ethical quandaries of either taking or giving directions to staff, taking or giving direction to students, or having an everyday or ongoing presence in the school system. So, it's supposed to be by design a passive position that does not require much interaction with the planning of the program or with the instruction of the kids. That's at least the expectation of the board.
Okay, so it's not like he's going to be on the field with the kids? Or, okay, obviously, it's a sore subject here, and I'm not going to move it forward.
I was gonna say, I was gonna help you finish your thought, because your time is up.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Janet.
Leslie Gottlieb?
Hi, Leslie Gottlieb, 464A Liberty Street, Apartment 102 Little Ferry.
Good evening.
Janet took one of my questions, but I had a compliment and a question. It was, a compliment was seeing on the board agenda tonight, you know, the different incoming and outgoing tuitions that Ridgefield Park is paying for going to Bergen Academy, for the special ed kids, the special ed kids coming in. I didn't see the Little Ferry tuition listed, but I'm assuming that's because that's under review at this time. The question, sorry, it's hard for me to talk with the mask on, let me take it off. The question I had was, I noticed you were getting rid of a lot of cabinets that looked like they were used to hold and charge laptops, and that seemed like, I don't see how those got obsolete unless they don't work with the current laptops or Chromebooks. Just was wondering about that.
You know what, Ms. Gottlieb, I'll have an answer for you regarding that when I speak with our board administrator, who is not present tonight.
Okay.
But I'll have an answer for you.
Again, those are one of the things that I always see that maybe other people could use, but we always seem to have to, you know, donate them for auction.
Thank you for your comments.
Ed DeSantis?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Ed DeSantis, 15 Homestead Place. Resolution 272. I noticed the English teacher is at an 8 MA step. Just curious, not doubting the abilities of this person, that's pretty high up on the step for a high school English teacher. Will they be teaching advanced classes? And have you had the unfortunate experience of not getting a lot of candidates?
I'm sorry, you said 272, right?
I did say 272.
Thank you so much.
We received many candidates. We interviewed a lot. We felt this person, for many reasons, was a great match for our district. And I will further say, for all of these pages, these three pages of employment, whether they are transitions or new hires or people who are leaving our district, I worked very closely with Mr. Demakoff on both their salaries, their hiring, and the steps that they were on.
Okay. The other question's on Resolution P 282, which is not a surprise. Glad to see the change in the title. I hope that it stays that way this year, rather than how things went last year. My question is, why was it on the agenda in the first place? I mean, Superintendent, Business Administrator, Mr. Demakoff, the Board President reviewed the agenda. Why was it there in the first place?
Historically speaking, I believe all volunteers for fall sports always get on the agenda at the same time we have a resolution for fall sports coaches, given that most of the majority of the practices are starting in the beginning of August.
I understand that. But I'm glad the coaching got removed from this. But I was curious why it was even there in the first place. It seemed like something that should have been caught right away. I'm not going to belabor that, so thank you.
Thank you for your time. Any comments?
Susan DeSantis?
Good evening, miss.
Susan DeSantis, 15 Homestead Place, FP 137. I just hope that the board comes up with some goals this year instead of the kind of nonsense that it came up with last year, like maybe changing the curriculum and bringing it to where it should be. This E L L C consulting, reading the...
Which resolution is that, miss?
Which one?
The E L L consulting you mentioned?
F I 294.
Thank you so much.
From what I read with the attachments, it sounds like you're having somebody come in to coach people on how to write curriculum. I thought that we were paying stipends to people to do that job all year.
Again, not having our board, our Business Administrator present tonight, we'll have to get back to you at our next board meeting, if that's okay.
I see we have another resignation. A lot of these, you know, as people have said before, people are being hired at pretty high salaries when normally try to get one BA to keep costs down. P 282, again, in light of what went on last year and the fact that there's, you know, ethics complaints filed, and now it's going to the administrative law, I think that it's a disgrace that this is even on the agenda. Mr. Demakoff, could you tell me, give me an update on the Bender litigation and the Little Ferry tuition?
There's been no change.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Sharon Ramirez?
Good evening, miss.
Hello. Sharon Ramirez, 205 Overpack. So there's two things on the agenda. P 254, the resignation. He was my daughter's teacher, and I know that he's moving on, but he was fantastic. So I just wanted the board to know that, that my daughter really enjoyed his class, and she's very sad that he was leaving. He spoke to the class, I guess, a few weeks ago to let him know. Also, P 275, this individual that's going to be appointed tonight for special education. She was actually one of my employees many years ago as a lifeguard, and I'm very happy if she can be appointed. I think she'll be a phenomenal addition to our district. So this makes me very happy to see her name on the agenda. So the one question I do have is, what is the criteria that this Kimberly Marcus will be evaluating the curriculum director?
Pass this question on to Mrs. Wright, our board attorney, if you don't mind.
Sure. So Dr. Haynes, in his role as the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Operations, has a job description. So the evaluation will be based on his performance of the duties in that job description.
And she's using what as an evaluative tool? Like, what kind, is there a rubric she's using? Is there, you know, going into teacher lingo? Is there, like, what is she using as an evaluate standpoint?
So I'm going to have to admit to everyone, I went, I went to law school. I am not an educator, so I do not, I don't know the rubric she's going to use. But given her longstanding educational experience, I assume she has a rubric that she intends on using and will use that in conjunction with his job description.
So it's just based on, it would just be based on the Director of Curriculum job description, just like what was brought up before? I mean, I know you have two jobs. So does that get taken into an account? Does that?
Yes. So he is going to be evaluated twice. He will be evaluated in his role as the Acting Superintendent, and by statute, that is done by the Board of Education. But the Board of Education is only permitted to evaluate the Acting Superintendent, not someone who is subordinate to the Superintendent. So that's why an outside person is being brought in to do the evaluation for the DCIO position.
Because he's technically a subordinate of himself.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
Yes. And the board, the board cannot evaluate him in that position. That's why.
They can only evaluate him as a superintendent?
Correct.
I know I'm looking at you, but you can't see that I'm looking. So thank you so much. Okay. I feel like I'm just looking on the side. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments.
Christina Ramos?
While Christina comes up, Ms. Wright, could you clarify, so when this consultant comes in and produces, I guess, a report card, for lack of a better word, does that just go into, into Dr. Haynes's personnel file? Or is it reviewed by the State Monitor?
So the State Monitor has authority over personnel and personnel matters, personnel appointments, I assume, but I don't want to speak for him. He may review that evaluation. I don't know what role specifically he's played in that. Given the, really, the joint role now, it's going to be my recommendation that the board has the right to be able to review that evaluation as well. So the board will see that evaluation, and the monitor will as well.
Thank you.
So Carrie, I'm thinking I need to recuse myself from this, but I will offer that Ms. Harrington, she has communicated with me, she has told me the rubric that she's using. It's very similar to, we use a strong evaluation model. The name is Strong Evaluation Model in our district. It has seven containers or categories for administrators that they fill out, and she's looking to use a rubric that's very similar to that.
I'm generally familiar with the strong model. So that's good.
Good evening.
Good evening. Christina Ramos, 382 Teaneck Road. I'm here because of P 280, P number 282. As mentioned in my emails to the board and to Mr. Haynes, I'm very disappointed to see this here. I feel that this is a slap in the face as a community member who brought this situation to your attention. You're aware of everything that is happening with this case. You mentioned in your email that you know this is before the New Jersey courts, but yet you continue to push this forward, and I find it very disappointing. It is clear that you're okay with having a person volunteer with our football players who is a liar, who is a proving liar, and who has been dishonest, has no integrity, and you think it's okay? So this is what kind of...
Miss Ramos, I'm going to interrupt you a second.
Yes.
Because I want to clarify something, and Mrs. Wright, if you'd like to also...
And this is not on my time, so hold the clock.
Neither the Superintendent nor the Board of Education as a governing body is responsible for promoting an individual board member to volunteer for a position. It is the individual volunteer board member's right to volunteer for that, but it does not mean that it is promoted or advocated by either the Superintendent or the entire Board of Education.
Okay. So then I will address each board member here tonight. I'm referring to, you guys have been on the emails, you have seen proof from videos that took place last summer, his statement that did not match at all, his accusations towards myself, my husband, and other community members, no proof whatsoever, lied about involving the police, no complaint or anything was filed with the police, Ridgefield Park Police. How many, how much more do we need to say, well, you know what, we're not going to have someone like this around our children? So if you say this is okay, shame on you, because this can happen to any of you at any given moment. It's not okay that somebody said, and then you change his title. So you change his title, and what does that mean? You changed it last year, and he was on the field, which is why I was on the field to record him since, oh, he was not on the field. He's just handling equipment. He's just a water boy. He was on the field with a football in his hands, giving orders to the students. And not only is he a liar, but he's using these children that he cares for so much as human shields in his lies to attack and, and assassinate my character, my husband's character, who he doesn't even know, never met in his life, and other people in the community. Why? Because we stood up here as, my right as a parent, and said, what you're doing is wrong? You are not supposed to volunteer. Is coaching a bad thing? Absolutely not. I've been coaching girls' basketball rec for years. The point is, he is a board member. It's a conflict of interest. I sent you documents so that you can verify that your own attorney, Carrie Wright, sent last year, and it clearly states it's a conflict of interest. You want to coach? Resign. Grab your whistle and go on the field. You don't want, you want to stay here? You can't have your cake and eat it too. It's the rules. He is not exempt to the rules. Nobody on the panel is exempt to the rules. So why is this on this when we have so many other important issues to deal with? Since, yes, oh my God. We need to call him. Call God, because he needs to come. Okay, well, that's too bad. He's certainly not listening to you, ma'am.
Please direct your comments to the board.
So, as I was saying, this is terrible, that we're putting someone who has no, who has no moral or honesty bone in him, to lie about somebody? How would you like it if he goes and accuses your wife, your husband, that you try to run him over? Never seen them in their life. I mean, it's pathetic. This is a whole nother level of crazy. And it's not fair to have someone like that around our children. I mean, when is it going to be enough? So it's okay to lie. It's okay to be dishonest. It's okay to, to use children as human shields to attack someone and lie. It's not okay. And the whole point of this, like I said, nothing to do because the coaching is bad. That's not bad. But you can't do it. It's written that it can't be done. It's a conflict of interest, period. No matter how you want to look at it, it's not right. So when you vote on it today, I surely hope that you've researched and you have the actual facts about what he can and cannot do. This is in front of the New Jersey courts for a reason. So if you want, at least, say, okay, let's wait to see what the New Jersey courts say, which even though Ms. Carrie sent an email clearly last year showing that he, where it says he clearly cannot coach. It's a conflict. But you want more confirmation? Fine. Wait until, you know, you give him this title. It's like giving a chef a title of a chef, but he's washing dishes. You're giving him a title of quality control, but he's on the field coaching.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos.
Thank you.
Jay Sean Sadler?
Good evening, Mr. Sadler. Will you be obliging by our five-minute rule? Would you be obliging by our five-minute rule?
Will you be a legitimate arbiter of that five-minute rule and apply it equally to everyone, sir? Will you be doing that?
I have.
You have not done that. But I will, I will go ahead and make my statement. Thank you so much for your comment.
Don't make your comments towards me.
Thank you for your disingenuous comment, sir.
Don't make your comments towards me.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I hope my time hasn't started. I'm gonna start now. Thank you so much, Mr. Fernandez. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay. So noticeably absent from the small flurry of hirings, listen, on this agenda, is any mention of staff who would directly help to procure much-needed mental health services for our children. This is very concerning to me. While we have staff who go above and beyond, like Ms. Steeman, Nurse Erin, Ms. Ava, and Mr. Jarvis, to name some, their commendable individual efforts, for which I'm incredibly grateful, don't represent the sustainable, comprehensive, and systematic approach our kids need for the adequate provision of their mental health services. Additionally, with regard to the hirings in general, I would like to know if and exactly how the Social Justice Resolution from July 2020, specifically Resolution Number Four, was applied to these hirings. It was very good to hear Dr. Martinez's characterization of the hirings earlier in the meeting, but I lament the lack of direct community involvement in the process as per the Social Justice Resolution. Lastly, it is gravely disconcerting to see that our Superintendent would recommend the official naming of Christopher Gibbons as a volunteer football coach or quality control equipment volunteer. Given all the evidence myself and several other community members have presented of his gross misconduct, it is abundantly clear that Mr. Gibbons is not fit to serve our children in either of these capacities, given his woefully obvious lack of integrity. We need strong role models of high character and positive repute from which our children can learn and grow, not dishonest actors who flout rules and regulations while exhibiting an infantile temperament when held to account for his actions, as Mr. Gibbons frequently does. The very presence of this resolution speaks volumes for our Superintendent and many members of our board. I am disappointed, but far from discouraged. I know that there are good, honest people in this community who can see clearly what is happening here and who will stand together and fight for the kind of leadership, the kind of school district our children ultimately deserve. I stand firmly with you all and will continue fighting until we bring... I stand firmly with you all and will continue fighting until we bring this ultimate vision of our children, for our children, to fruition. The days of Mr. Gibbons, his apologists and enablers, their continued tarnishing of our district, and their continued obstruction of our collective progress are numbered, thankfully. Election time will be here soon enough, and I really can't wait. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Sadler, I think you had two minutes on the clock, so I'm going to take a little bit of time. Because there are so many new hires and some transfers, I do want to speak about the process. Because the process at a school district level is that administrators, and I need to speak to the amazing administrators that we have in place, who recognize who our students are, who recognize that we have a very diverse population with diverse needs and need to see mentors and models who reflect them. That's what our administrators do. With that understanding, they went in and looked at a huge candidate pool. They went through interviews and came out with, in my mind and in the mind of the Personnel Committee, many candidates who also reflect our student population, the diversity of our students, and the needs to meet our students. So I first have to give them credit and I have to give credit to the team that they are building moving forward. The process is our administrators interview people. They come to my attention for either a second or a third interview. I review them. I work very closely before I make any offers with Mr. Demakoff, who is always in the loop. We talk about many things. If Mr. Demakoff approves, I go back to the candidate. I offer them a position with a salary, and then I bring it to the Personnel Committee. All of these hires were very transparent with the Personnel Committee. They had all of the resumes and background and information, and we had wonderful discussions on Monday night about it. And that's the way the process is supposed to work. I'd like to thank all of the amazing administrators, the process, the Board of Education, working with Mr. Demakoff, and seeing that come out so successfully to benefit our students.
We have one person online.
One second. Go ahead. Yeah, can I just follow up on that? I'll confess that I'm not a good sleeper, and I spend a lot of time when the personnel list comes out, doing a little bit of internet stalking to see who's related to who and to see whether we're actually, you know, fishing in a big pool. And I was impressed with this in particular, I've been impressed before, impressed with this particular crop of hires. And I actually contacted Dr. Haynes, you know, on the side, because I was impressed with, you know, the amount of experience that many of them had. Many of them, not that there's anything wrong with, you know, new hires that are on the young side, but many of them had vast experience. They had traveled. They had been on different parts of the country. And they had, you know, demonstrated scholarship. They went to good schools and they got good grades. And I was very impressed by that. So I hear what you're saying, Mr. Sadler, and I expect you to keep holding our feet to the fire because we both know that this stuff fades if the public is not invested in keeping us honest. So thank you.
And just to add on to your point, Trustee Martinez, I think some of these hires are coming from California, Taiwan, and Virginia, I think is some of the candidates. Nancy, I'm sorry, did you say we had one more? Online, please promote, Dan. Thank you.
Evening, Elaine Marin, 77th Street.
Good evening.
Hi, I'd like to speak about P two eighty-two as well. I voiced my concerns about Mr. Gibbons and volunteering for months and months, actually. I think I sent an email in the fall with my concerns, and I just want to reiterate that since the last couple of months and reading his rebuttal, I'm appealing to the board right now to really consider if this is somebody that we feel should be working with our children. He had said several times that he was concerned with Mrs. Ramos and Mr. Sadler and that they might be potentially dangerous. Their parents, they're well-known in the district. What I think was really dangerous is to put out words like dangerous, that they could have potentially had a gun or been mentally unstable, mentally ill. I don't think these are terms that we should just be throwing out. I think that they perpetuate stereotypes, and I think that these behaviors are even more damaging and dangerous to our community. Many on the board are not parents. These two are parents. They have shown that they are invested in the community, that they want what is right for not only their children, but all of the children. To say that Mr. Ramos was stalking was absolutely absurd, in my opinion. They literally live around the block from each other, literally live around the block from each other. If you saw Mr. Ramos on his block, it's because it's his neighborhood as well. So I do have a question, though. What are the repercussions if Mr. Gibbons does end up on the field and coaching? I know as a teacher, if I am not where I'm supposed to be, or I'm doing something I'm not supposed to be doing, then I'm getting written up for that. So what are the repercussions if Mr. Gibbons cannot control himself and he ends up on the field coaching? If I happen to be, you know, I'm off in the summer, so if I happen to be down at the park and I see him or another parent sees him, what are the repercussions? Because clearly last year he was coaching. Does anyone have an answer for that?
Carrie, if you don't mind making a comment regarding Mrs. Marin's question.
No problem. So the board always has authority to revoke its approval of volunteers in any capacity. But for the most part, individual board members are given ethics training. They're giving ethics advice. And if a member of the public, if a member of the administration, member of staff, parent, anyone feels that a board member has violated the School Ethics Act, they have the right to file a complaint with the School Ethics Commission. So those are the repercussions for stepping over the lines of what the School Ethics Act requires.
Okay, so was Mr. Gibbons, did he receive ethics training before last season?
Every board member receives ethics training on an annual basis. It's required by law. And since I've been the board attorney, I know that this board has received that ethics training every year.
Okay, so once again, I appeal to the board, knowing that Mr. Gibbons did receive ethics training and did end up violating his responsibilities, I ask you to please consider not allowing him to volunteer again. Thank you.
Please promote. Good evening.
Hi, Nancy Myler, 355 Teneck Road.
Good evening, Nancy.
Hello, everyone. So I would just like to speak and address to the issue regarding Mr. Gibbons. I am not an expert on everything that board members are required to do and not to do, although I have done some investigating on my own. What I would like to say, however, is that there are plenty of members of the community who do support Mr. Gibbons, who do support what he gives back to the community and his concern for the well-being of our children. I also do have a ton of faith in Ms. Wright as our legal advisor to make sure that things are done as properly as possible. Does that mean in the future, things may not be reversed? Of course they might. But I'd like to think that based on what I know of our board members, based on what I know of Ms. Wright as our legal advisor, that things are being done to the best of everyone's ability to make sure they follow any legal requirements as well as any ethical requirements. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to resolutions. Okay, Faculty and Programs, Trustee Rodriguez.
I so move FP one three-three through FP one three-eight.
Second.
Any comments or questions regarding FP one three-three through one three-eight?
I just want to comment on FP one three-three. I'm very happy to see that we're providing the services throughout the summer for the students. It's really good to see that they're doing something active, especially I see they're going to the gym.
Any other comment or question on FP one thirty-three through one thirty-eight? Mr. Phytros.
Yes, to the ones except for FP one thirty-five. Jump stand.
Mr. Gibbons?
Yes, for all, but I'm an extension on FP one forty and FP one thirty-four.
One forty?
Yes, one forty and one thirty.
That's new business.
I'm sorry then.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. McNeil?
Um, yes, I just have one quick comment I should have made earlier, but I just noticed it. One thirty-six says exclamation point, two thirty instead of twelve thirty, otherwise I'm a yes.
Noted.
Dr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Verselli?
Yes, sorry.
Mr. Cathcart?
Yes.
President Fernandez?
Yes, would please state in the minutes that we have to change the, into acting and one thirty-eight, please. Thank you. Finance and Insurance, Trustee Gomes?
Yes, I so move FI two seventy-nine to FI three oh eight.
Second.
Who seconded? Any comments or questions regarding FI two seventy-nine to three oh eight?
Yes, I'd like to commend our board administrator, our business administrator, for taking the time to not increase our breakfast or lunch prices on our, for our families for the next school year. I want to just maybe put that on the record.
Mr. Phytros?
Yes, to all, except for those that I'm conflicted to vote on. I'm abstaining.
Mr. Gibbons?
I'm a yes on all, except I'm abstaining for P, oh, I'm sorry. Or an FI, correct? FI two eighty-two and two ninety-six. I'm abstention.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Dr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes, to all, but I've seen on FI, FI two ninety-seven, two ninety-eight, three oh two, and three oh five.
Mr. Verselli?
Yes.
Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Cathcart?
Yes. I'm sorry, I'll be abstaining on two eighty-two.
Thank you. President Fernandez?
Yes. Moving on to consent agenda, I so moves CR thirty-seven and thirty-eight.
I second.
Any comments or questions regarding CR thirty-seven through CR thirty-eight? Seeing none. Mr. Phytros?
I am a yes on CR thirty-seven, number one, and thirty-eight. And abstention on the others.
Mr. Gibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Dr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes, on thirty-seven, no, on thirty-eight.
Mrs., Mr. Verselli?
Yes.
Mr. Cathcart?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
President Fernandez?
Yes. Moving on to personnel, Trustee Gibbons?
Yes, I'd like to, P two fifty-four. It's not working. Two P. Two eighty-three.
Any comments or questions regarding P two fifty-four to P two eighty-three?
I have a quick question, Dr. Haynes. For the list of the coaches and the list of the extra compensation, are those comprehensive?
Meaning?
Meaning that are the list of coaches, these are all of the coaches for the fall sports?
Correct. These are the positions that are in the current RPEA guide. Yes.
Okay, and in the extra compensation, can you just comment on peer modeling and what that is?
I apologize, I just spoke with one of the principals about this as we reviewed this. Can I get back to you on that? My apologies.
Sure. Wait, isn't peer modeling in the students' IEP?
Looking at the staff, yes, it has to do with IEPs.
My only other question or request is I would like to move to table two eighty-two until we have a description of the quality control and equipment position.
I'll second that. So then we need a vote on the floor, right? So starting with Michelle Worth.
Can I ask a question on P two eighty-two? I'm confused based on Dr. Haynes's comments before. The resolution reads that it's based on the recommendation of the acting superintendent of schools, and yet his verbal indications seem to say that's not the case. So I'd like you to clarify.
Sure, and I will put this one to Carrie Wright because we had discussions about this.
Sure, I think that the language of the recommendation is simply because almost every one of your resolutions is drafted that way. The superintendent has to make recommendations to the board on certain categories of things. Volunteers who are approved by the board is not one of those items particularly specifically listed in the statute that the superintendent must must recommend to the board. So I believe that that's what Dr. Haynes was referring to. So it's up to the board on whether or not you want to approve specific volunteers or any volunteers. Some boards don't approve volunteers. I think it's good practice, but it's not it's not required.
I was under the impression that the board member is putting himself or herself on the agenda to volunteer, but the superintendent, acting superintendent, whatever, they he or she cannot make the recommendation and the board cannot vote on it. That's what I understood. Because the person who's volunteering is a board member.
So the board certainly can approve volunteers, even if one of those volunteers happens to be a board member. I would recommend that Mr. Gibbons recuse himself from the discussion and from the vote.
So there's a motion to table and a second. So can Carrie, you help us out with Robert's rules? Do we vote on the motion to table?
Yes, yeah. The next thing that you need to do, if there's discussion on what that means, you could have that discussion, but there's a motion on the table to table, pun intended, the resolution P 282. So that is the vote that the board would take. I'm sorry, Dr. Haynes, did you say something to me?
Yeah, I wanted to clarify because I thought the discussion that we had earlier was illuminating to me in that there is a difference between resolutions that the acting superintendent promotes for full-time employees that are endorsed and go through a hiring process, as I described before, versus this type of this position, which is a board voluntary position. They are two different animals. It's it's not as if I, as the acting superintendent, promote this specific individual.
Yes, I agree with that.
I guess I still don't understand, though, if you're not promoting it, but yet we're voting that you're recommending it. It seems like that's a conflict. Shouldn't it just read that if we're going to vote on it, if you're if you are recommending it or you're not recommending it?
Carrie?
I think what Dr. Haynes is saying is he's doing neither of those things. This issue is before the board to decide whether it wants to approve Mr. Gibbons as a volunteer. You either do or you do not. He is not advocating for it one way or the other, despite the fact that the resolution is written the way all of your resolutions are written. That's what I believe he's saying, that he's neither recommending it nor not recommending. It's it's completely up to the board to decide if you want to approve a volunteer.
Okay, so at this point, we're taking a vote to table it, correct, Carrie?
Yes, there is a there is a motion and a second on the floor right now. So your vote right now is if it's a if you vote yes, that will table this resolution. You can bring it up at your next meeting or a following meeting, but a yes vote would table this so that you're not approving or disapproving of this appointment. A no vote will bring you back to the original motion, and we can walk through that in a second. So my recommendation is unless there are any questions about this, the board vote on whether to table this.
Thank you so much for your guidance.
You're welcome.
Motion on the table?
Thank you.
Tabling P 282. Mr. Phytros?
No.
Mr. Gibb?
I'm abstention.
Abstention. Mr. Gomes?
No.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Verselli? Mr. Verselli?
Mr. Verselli, you're muted.
Uh, no, it didn't show me being muted. Did you hear me? No.
Mr. Cathcart?
No.
President Fernandez?
No.
You missed McNeil and Martinez.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Dr. Martinez?
Yes.
That's four yes and four no.
But we've counted five no. So I believe the the motion carries five, four.
Sorry, you are correct.
I'm sorry.
Five, no, you are correct.
I'm sorry, the motion does not carry. I meant the opposite of that. So the motion fails. Five, five, four, it does not carry. So now, now you go back to, I do not recall whether there was a motion to move all of the P items.
Yes, was.
There was. Okay, so now the board can continue to discuss all of the items in personnel and then vote on that motion.
Mrs. Wright?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So just so I'm clear, so we're P 282 is the voluntary voluntary, sorry, volunteer quality control and equipment manager, the exact same thing that we approved last year, same restrictions.
My understanding is that Dr. Haynes made that suggestion, but the board needs to make that decision in its vote right now if that's what it's voting on, because your resolution as written says volunteer football coach.
But I believe.
So do we have to vote to change your name then?
No, I believe.
That would be my recommendation to follow Robert's rules is that you, someone makes a motion to amend that particular resolution, to change the title so that it's clear in the minutes you're changing the title from volunteer football coach for 2022 fall sport season to volunteer of quality control and equipment manager. You will vote on that change to that resolution and then go back and vote.
I make a motion, we make the changes as read by Carrie.
Second that.
Second.
I'm sorry, a second?
Mr. Verselli?
So now the board can discuss the change to that resolution, the change in the title. If there's no discussion on the change in the title, then you would vote on the amendment to that resolution.
So my question on the change in title remains because it's been stated that we're just approving the same thing as last year with the same quote unquote restrictions. I don't know that there's any written information that would describe what those restrictions or duties of this position are.
Is that directed at me? I can't, I can't tell, I'm sorry.
I guess I'm directing it at whoever would could direct me to where there's written information as to what the restrictions or responsibilities of this position exactly are.
I do not believe that the board has a job description for this title. Though you do have a job description for for volunteer coaches, I do not believe you have a job description for this title.
Can I also make a quick distinction here? Because we did, we did a little research and went back to 2013, and volunteer coach in the district is generally one of our professional educators who volunteers for tennis, volleyball, and other things. It is not a board member. So this is, this is a unique job description for this specific role.
So do we proceed to vote on the amended to this resolution, Mrs. Wright?
Yes, unless there's any further discussion or questions.
My, my question would be, wouldn't it, wouldn't it protect us as a board and Mr. Gibbons if we had a specific job description that he could say, this is the lane that I stayed in and I didn't stray and and that everybody would be clear on it?
Best practices is to have job descriptions. And since you have a job description for some of your volunteer positions, I would say that it is a best practice for you to have job descriptions.
Okay, I can, I can always direct our acting superintendent to write a job description, correct?
Yes, you can.
So we're supposed to vote on this, on the amendment, correct?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Nancy.
Just for clarity, voting on the amendment is saying that we agreed to the change in the resolution, not adopting the resolution?
That is correct.
That is correct. That's a very good question. So if you vote in favor of amending the resolution, the next vote, which will be the third one to finish, finish off this group, the next vote will be whether you approve or disapprove of P 282 in its new form.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Phytros?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbons?
I'm an abstention.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Dr. Martinez?
Yes, to the amendment.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes, to amending the resolution.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Verselli?
Yes.
Mr. Cathcart?
Yes.
President Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion passed.
So now you will go back to the original motion and the second, and the next vote you will take will be all of your personnel agenda, which will include the now amended P 282.
I have a question about P 282. So volunteer coach, does that, does that position, is that position posted and available to the employees?
Your employees would not, I would not think that they would want to volunteer.
So if I was an employee and I wanted to volunteer to be an assistant coach, because later on I will like to be an assistant coach. So I'm just wondering, has this position, quality control of equipment, has this position been offered to current employees in Richfield Park?
I don't have the answer to that. I suspect it hasn't, but I don't know.
Why not? Because if I am an employee who will like to become a coach, I am going to volunteer. So then hopefully I will get that job. So it's like, why not opening up this to see who who is currently employed in Richfield Park Public School System, who's willing to do quality control and equipment, or maybe a student, a current student, who would like to volunteer their time? Is their high school years, not ours?
And just to be clear, Trustee Rodriguez, there's not just one volunteering position. You can have up to multiple volunteer positions. It's not just one, you can have plenty. We've had times where we've had five or six. It's again, it's the motive, it's them.
And we have more than five or six employees in Richfield Park.
Why aren't they being recommended?
Did you ask them?
I'm a, I, as a board president, you would like me to ask them?
Only whoever is recommending it, well, is the acting, according to this, the recommendation of the acting superintendent of school. So wait a second, so you're not going to ask them as a board president, but then this person is going to be on the field having conversations. So I'm, I'm just.
I wouldn't trust in the process that they were picked. I entrust, I do trust the process that it was picked. I will repeat my.
What is the process?
I entrust the, it was done.
Can I just state one thing on P 282 here? First off, I don't ever remember that anybody would turn down volunteers. You could probably have multiple. The second thing that has been left out of this is it's the kids. The kids for the last 15 years, the kids' parents for the last 15 years, I have never, ever heard a complaint. I've only heard of praise about how Gibbs has always been a friend to them, has always helped them with with family stuff, giving them advice. I mean, just talk about the kids here. It really comes down to that, and that's all I got to say.
Moving on to the, to moving on to this motion, please.
Do we keep the original first and second?
Yes.
Mr. Phytros?
Okay, can we repeat this again? Because I'm still confusing.
We are voting on resolution 2, P 254 to P 283.
Okay, I'm a yes to all with the exceptions of 255, 256, 270, 271, 273, and 275, which I'm abstention on all seven of those.
Mr. Phytros, including P 274?
274, I think I'm an abstention, I think I was told I have to abstain on that one. Let me see. Yeah, 274, you have to abstain on that one. Is she a high school teacher? I don't, it's not clear.
I'm sorry, she's elementary, so.
Okay, so 270, so 255, 256, 270 through 275, with the exception of 272 I am voting on. So many of them, so. That's, I'm yes to all the others.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Gomes?
I'm a yes, but advise of our attorney, I would like the superintendent to to write a description for P 282 presented to the board.
Mrs. McNeil?
I'm a yes to all, no 282.
Dr. Martinez?
I'd like to comment that I'm, I'm very torn up about this position because I voted yes for this last year, and I voted yes because I thought that we could avoid the ethical issues by limiting that position and and keeping Mr. Gibbons from broaching any ethical issues that might come up. And so on its face, I, I, I wish I could vote yes, but however, as they say, the cover up is sometimes worse than the crime. And I think that Mr. Gibbons' behavior, since the ethics complaint was filed, has been abysmal and disrespectful, and I'm really disappointed. And so for that reason, I'm going to be a yes to all of them except that one.
Mrs. Orth?
I'm a yes to all, except 282. I'm a no.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes, to all, no on P 282.
Mr. Verselli?
Yes.
Mr. Cathcart?
Yes.
President Fernandez?
Yes, to all.
Motion passed.
I wasn't called, Nancy.
I apologize. Mr. Gibbons?
Thank you, Ms. Luricano. I'm an abstention from 282, 260, and 281.
281? Motion passed.
Moving on to citizens' comments, off agenda items.
Janet Malo? Janet Malou?
Janet Malou, 163 East Grand. Um, this past Saturday night, the Richfield Park Arts Association held their Summer Arts Fest. And I was thrilled, I am thrilled to stand here and say that this year we actually had students performing. Um, we came to the, um, the play. We identified students that we thought would prove to be at more of a professional level. And we asked them to participate. We also spoke with Ms. Dana Butler, who runs the, um, the dance club, I guess it's called. We attended the program the other day. Um, we went from one program to another. And we were blown away by the performances by the kids. And even she agreed to perform that night for us. And she brought, I think it was seven or nine dance students down. I did not notice everybody that came, but I did notice that Ms. Thehman and Mr. Toddros came. And I was not surprised about Ms. Thehman, cause she comes to anything we do, just like, um, Dr. Bender used to. Um, we also had students volunteering to help out that night. I was a little disappointed that we didn't have as many as I had hoped for, but it was enough to, um, do the job we needed done. And just for, um, uh, the record, we have been, between us and the green team, we have been instrumental in getting kids hours, community service hours. And, um, I really hope that that relationship continues. It's a win-win for everybody. And for the few that, for some reason, graduating seniors that didn't get enough hours in so far, we came up with other tasks that needed to be done, so they could get the extra hour in here or there, instead of one of our volunteers doing it. Okay, on another note, this whole mess about middle school, junior high school. I'm not sure how many of you were on the board or active years ago. I know a few of you are. My daughter attended school here, I believe it was 2000 to 2006. When she came down as a seventh grader and through eighth grade, she was on a different schedule. They came in earlier, they left earlier. The advantage of that was the fact that they weren't going and coming with the high school kids. It also, um, kind of pushed their schedule a little differently, so they weren't sitting, maybe some of them were in with some ninth graders for lunch, but they certainly weren't in with 11th and 12th graders. There was some kind of a differentiation made. The other thing, and some of the conversations from the last meeting, I gather, we're talking about, um, you know, the fact of the kids intermingling and stuff like that. There was a program, I don't know if you still have it here, an excellent program called Heroes and Cool Kids. And a lot of them were student athletes, um, honor roll, stuff like that. And they would go down, they were trained, because there were days they would be sent to, sometimes Bergen Community or other locations. They were trained in how to, um, go about talking to younger students and things of that nature. They would go down and talk to the sixth graders. And they created a kind of bond with the sixth graders. So when they came up here, they knew somebody, they knew a few familiar faces that they could trust. And I remember her tutoring as a upper high school kid, sev- a seventh grader. And I asked her the other day, and she said, well, those of us that were in the Math Honor Society were asked to help students in the seventh or eighth grade that were struggling. So there is a lot that can be done, providing that you kind of look at a lot of different ways of helping the younger ones coming in, assimilate with people that, you know, have proven themselves. And coming up with some kind of a plan. Now, it was mentioned last week, or like, last meeting, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, that Ms. Cavins was working on a plan for the seventh and eighth graders. Okay, my question is, where's the plan? What is the plan? This is the end of June. Whatever this plan is, should be in place for September. And as I've said before, you don't create a middle school plan in two months. And I would think whatever the plan is should be presented to the public and the board with a chance, and especially for the parents of kids coming in, for them to be able to comment. And I've said it many a time over the years, there should be a committee of parents, teachers, administrators, public that are interested, that sit together and help form something that everybody can be satisfied with.
Thank you, Ms. Luricano.
But again, do I have time for one last question? No? Yes. I'm just curious, real fast, um, acting superintendent's contract? Like for a super, acting superintendent?
I believe that is a personnel issue.
Okay, so we haven't gotten to that yet?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And, um, I will just leave you with this. Dr. Haynes was hired to do curriculum, directive curriculum. I personally think that's the most important job right now that needs to be addressed.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you.
A couple of answers to Ms. Malou. So many of those programs, you talked about peer mentoring, uh, our older students working with younger students, getting service hours for our honor students. All of those programs are still in place and running and doing a wonderful job. To your second question, as far as a plan for the seventh and eighth grades, graders, if you go to the district website and you look under superintendent, um, presentations from the 518 meeting, you will see the outline that I presented that contains the outline to that plan that we're talking about, that the administration here will flesh out, but it's, uh, it has a lot of, uh, already support. Okay?
Susan DeSantis?
Good evening. Do we know what the course per student is? Do, do you know what the course per student is? I asked that a couple of meetings ago. And, uh, okay.
Off the top of my head.
Okay. Um, I'd like to make a comment that, you know, we have a contract with the attorney for a certain amount of meetings to come to for free. And never before in the history of when I've been here, do we have an attorney at every single meeting, spending a fortune on legal fees. Um, there really should be a point where this board takes the time to read Robert's Rules of Order. It's not very hard to learn about motions. It's really very simple.
Strictly asking her for guidance, it's all. Or strictly asking her for her guidance on it.
Which is ridiculous to pay over $200 an hour when you could just read what the rules are.
If, if it was an issue, I would believe our state monitor would make it a point.
A point to what?
Cancel it.
Well, maybe he should, because this is costing this district a fortune, along with the other amounts of money that you're throwing around like water.
Well spent.
Also, the president does not make motions.
Noted.
I think at this point, we've had an exorbitant amount of people leaving this district. I said this last meeting, more staff leaving, as I said, people don't leave when they're happy. That only happens when people aren't happy with the administration. Uh, Dr. Haynes is obviously not capable of doing both jobs and being acting superintendent, even with all the help and positions created to do his curriculum job. Our staff is not happy, they're overburdened. And, um, I think it's time that this, uh, board makes a motion to make a settlement with Dr. Bender, bring her back, and let this district move forward. Listen to the community, stop wasting our money on frivolous nonsense, and bring her back where she belongs, to continue what she started. This is ridiculous. It's hurting every child in this district. A few thousand students are suffering because of this. Because of, because you have some kind of vendetta and some, uh, personal agenda. Bring her back and stop this now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Ed DeSantis?
Ed DeSantis, 15 Homestead Place.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I had two things I wanted to talk about tonight off agenda. However, this meeting, resolution P 282.
Keep it off agenda.
It is off agenda, you already voted. However, that may be up in the air, and Kerry may be advised as, as far as Mrs. Wright and every attorney we have had, except Mrs. Dis- Mr. Distrel last time, has said that when a personnel issue is voted on, you need six affirmative votes. Under normal circumstances, abstentions can go to the affirmative vote. This actually should be a reclusion, not an exemption. You do not have six affirmative votes to approve the, um, equipment coordinator. So, uh, my opinion, or whatever it's worth, that resolution didn't pass. Number two is, I asked the question earlier about why was it on the agenda? And there's a method to my madness, because in fact, the superintendent in schools recommends to the board any personnel issue, and I don't care who says otherwise. So that was a rec- well, don't laugh, Dr. Haynes, because it really should take responsibility for your own mishap. So, um, he, you did recommend it, which means you approved it, and it met your standards.
False.
And maybe in your world, but in education, I believe it's different.
The attorney, and I'll let her speak, said otherwise.
She said otherwise than I, but it's personnel. That's why it's on the personnel agenda. And he will, as Professor Verselli said, be helping these kids and interacting with the coaches, like for the last 15 years. So, so the change in the, in the, the title is meaningless as it was last year. The point was, it ended up on the agenda, with the knowledge of the board president, the knowledge of the superintendent. If you didn't look at the agenda before it went out, I'm sure Karen Koenig didn't put it on her by herself. That means you approved it, knowing there was litigation, ethics charges, the intention of snubbing your nose at the community.
False.
You can say false all you want, but doesn't make it true. So at this point, I don't feel the resolution passed. And number two, it is the board's responsibility to pick, uh, police themselves. The board has to be able to govern themselves to govern this district. If they can't govern themselves, there's no hope of it. And you, as leader, recommend personnel, don't hide behind the attorney. It doesn't cut it. You know, two important issues I wanted to bring up were, you have a teacher's contract. I'm hoping soon you can settle this. I don't know the ins and outs, but I think they've been working long enough for that contract. I understand how the two sides work. They've got to get what they can for their people. You've got to be fiscally responsible to the district. This is going on too long. It's better for the staff morale, it's better for the board and the district administration, the kids, if this gets settled sometime soon. The third thing, uh, that I wanted to bring up, and I think I have a couple of minutes anyway, is what are you going to do for the seventh and eighth grade in the fall? Summer vacation doesn't last forever. You have two or three meetings in the summer. Is there any plan of what we're going to do for the seventh and eighth graders since they, when they come back, since we have ripped away the principal?
I answered that with a previous person, and I'll say the same thing. The presentation on 513 presented the outline of that plan, which will be fleshed out by the administrators. You're welcome to go review that online. And Mr. DeSantis, as always, I invite you to my office to have a conversation, to review the plan that you would like to look at. I'm extending this offer, and I'd love to see you to talk about it.
I'll take, I'll take you on that offer. Thank you for your talk.
Thank you for your comments.
Kelly James Delia?
Good evening, sir. Good evening, Kelly Delia, 24 Central Avenue, 9A. So to begin, we, the people of the Village of Richfield Park, we do not need a ruthless tyrannical leader. We are the people who make up this town. It's time for our voices to be heard, and they are not. There is a complete disregard for we, the people of the Village of Richfield Park. We need a good-natured, a professional superintendent of schools without an agenda. The agenda must be to meet the needs, the stakeholders, the children of Richfield Park. One who is a good listener, whom we had, one whom hears the stakeholders, whom we've had. Thank you, Dr. Bender. I'm sorry, sir, but it's time for you to, uh, maybe hit the turnpike and take a ride out of town. It's right there behind the walls of the school. While being mindful of demands, a great superintendent will ultimately be guided by a singular question. What is best for the Village of Richfield Park? It's quite clear, the stakeholders, the students. There's no regard. We clearly want a middle school principal, and you know who we clearly want, and that's Diane Thehman. And you're sitting up here, snickering at us, meeting after meeting, and you're not a funny guy. And we're not telling jokes. It's not funny. Might as well just leave town. Might as well. We're bitter. We're not joyous, and neither are your people who work for you. So we'd like to thank you, Dr. Bender. While you were here, it worked. It's quite clear, bring her back. What is the status of our acting, yeah, acting, acting superintendent? When is your contract up? Things are pretty cloudy here in this village. There's a stench in the town, kind of like a swamp, right down the block, the Meadowlands. It's so unclear on what's going on in this town, or is it clear? This is our town. Where's our superintendent? There she is. And it's pretty selfish of the way you conduct yourself. It's pretty selfish. You have no regard for the village. We cannot be any more clear than we've been. Our middle school principal's here. There's no reason why you should be driving her out. We should be driving you out. You should be like the New York Rangers and saying goodbye to your season. Time's for you to go. Students have access to strong opportunities under the leadership of Dr. Bender and Ms. Diane Thehman, who make connections. What is the connection that you make? You did a handstand today, you did a cartwheel? Very impressive. It gets back to us. We need strong and inclusive learning environments created by these two nice ladies, who are here in attendance tonight, who foster a climate of continuous growth, empowering the village. Those who are around here can assume leadership roles, because they put them in positions to do so, while you cut leadership roles. The biggest shift in K to 12 education is the transition from elementary school to middle school. And you're going to cut it by cutting our servant, Diane Thehman, who is here leading the way on a daily basis. So much is different here, right? But she makes the difference here, in this position, which you obviously do not comprehend, as you are heads over heels in your position right now. Families need guidance, she provides it, as each family has their own individual needs. But you have no concern and no regard for the families, as you're willing to cut Ms. Diane Thehman, who we need, who we want, a middle school principal, Ms. Diane Thehman, who we need, who we want, Dr. Bender, as we no longer need your contract here, sir. Your agenda is more important than our needs. It's clear that you have an agenda. Our needs supersede your deaf ears. Most of us, many of us, as we are here, we care about the town, and we care about. Most of us, many of us, as we are here, we care about the town and we care about what's most important to youngsters, not your agenda. Our agenda supersedes yours. That's what will make us more joyous. That's what will make the children more joyous, and that is what needs to be done. It's time for change. We need what we want. Elections are coming up. People keep reiterating that. Some people just choose not to listen because agendas are more important than the people of the Village of Ridgefield Park.
Thank you for your comments. Good evening, Ms. How are you?
Good evening. Thank you for calling me Ms. I really appreciate that. Haven't been a Ms. in a long time. I'm Lori Passiuk, 15 Webster Street, Ridgefield Park, New Jersey. I'm vice president of the PTSA here. I'm incoming PTSA president. We had an emergency board meeting and asked our general membership what they wanted to do, if they wanted to write a letter in support of the middle school principal. Unanimously, they said yes, so here is what they wrote. Dear trustees of RP Board of Education, we, the members of Ridgefield Park Junior Senior High School PTSA, are writing in support of maintaining the middle school principal role. We are parents that have been advocating for this role or separate middle school for many years. Having an administrator that is dedicated solely to the seventh and eighth grade these last two years has been invaluable. These students are coming from the elementary schools and are often intimidated by the size of our school, sorry, I can't read, small, and the new rules they need to follow. This should not be taken lightly. They are at a precarious age, and these new stresses can become magnified by meeting many new faces as the adults they've counted on for years are no longer nearby. The last two years, the 300 or so middle school students have known and counted on the middle school principal to help them adjust, mediate conflicts, encourage achievements, and assist in getting students extra help when their grades slip. They have known her door was always open when they needed it. The school has over 1,200 students attending. Please ensure that the 300 middle schoolers continue, continue to have an administrator they can come to count on. Sincerely, the members of Ridgefield Park Junior Senior High School PTSA. Please listen to us parents. Please take us seriously. I know the board listened to us last time, and we thank you. We were very disappointed in Mr. Demakoff, but we thank the board for their vote. But please remember that his contract is up and we are not happy. And we were going to remember at the next cycle when all of you come up for reelection. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Heather Coleman Atalea.
Good evening, Ms. How are you?
Heather Coleman Otuyaloo, 27 Gordon Street. I have a couple of questions. First of all, with reference to Mr. Demakoff, and I understand the contract for the superintendent, acting superintendent will be coming up. Does he have, does he have the authority to override the board's vote as he did with the middle school principal? Good to know. I still would like to ask a question about the middle school and what's going to happen. And I understand that the acting superintendent has referred everyone to his presentation, which I have seen and I've also watched the recording, but that still doesn't tell me what's going to happen when my son walks in this school next year. Is there going to be a separate entrance? Will there be a separate lunchtime like there is now with a dedicated principal or whatever it is you're trying to replace it with in that session, in those lunch sessions? You mentioned a teacher dean. What is that? Is that a teacher that's teaching all day and comes out for one hour to be there for the kids? We don't know. So to say that we can go to your presentation, that gives us no information, nothing tangible that lets me know that in instances when we have tragedies, tragedies like the one in Texas where these kids lost their lives, and we have to send our kids into school and feel confident that our children feel safe because they have a principal like Dr. Ferraro at Lincoln where my son is, and a principal like Ms. Thieman here where my daughter is. And I understand that if any one of them had any anxieties that day, I know that principal would contact me, take care of my child while I'm not there until I can get there. I made a promise to each one of my kids when they were in my room that I would do my very best to protect them, to raise them, to be good human beings, to be healthy and to have a good education. And I will tell you right now, I would lay down my life right now for each one of them. So I'm not asking you to do that, but I'm asking you to take it very seriously when you make decisions that affect my children. And let's be clear, the board voted with the public. If you, Dr. Haynes, had not put that recommendation on the agenda to even be voted on, Mr. Demakoff could not have overturned their vote. Let's be clear about that. Now, I also recognize you weren't hired for this position. You were hired for curriculum, and I believe that you believe you're doing your best job. But sometimes our best is not sufficient, and it's definitely not acceptable. So please know, the parents of this town are not going to lay down and take fancy presentations or any kind of things you may present to placate us. We are going to fight until we feel that our children are comfortable, safe, healthy, and have a good learning environment. This is what our tax dollars pay for, and this is the promise that we make our children when we bring them into this world. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Good evening, Ms.
I like the Ms. too. Thank you. Sharon Ramirez, 205 Overpek. So first, I want to start off that I'm a proud parent of two Roosevelt graduates today, kindergarten and sixth grade. So thank you very much. But I saw, I was a little disappointed that was admitted out of the superintendent's report since you were there at both graduations. But I'm sitting at both these graduations, and I had a chance to reflect on the importance of graduation. It's fun, and it's a chance to celebrate, but it's not just that. It's important for their social emotional learning of the families and the scholars. These scholars in kindergarten and their family members need to celebrate, for the most part, their first year in school. For our sixth graders, they need a celebration of their hard work in elementary school and to acknowledge that they are moving on to a new school and will have new experiences. So thank you to Roosevelt and Mr. Cata and the staff there for giving the scholars a happy send-off or a happy new beginning. As stated before, I'm very happy with the teachers administration, administration in the schools. My kids are greeted every morning by Mr. Cata in Roosevelt and Mrs. Thieman in the junior high school. This, to me, is administration 101, greeting the scholars and assessing what their day will be. Knowing your students is the key to being effective leader and administrator. As you know, I'm a teacher, and in my new school, after only one month of being there, we had a faculty meeting where we were told to bring just ourselves. We were handed a paper and pen as we walked in. My principal gave us a task. First, write the names of all your students. That was easy. Now write those students who have allergies. Write the students that have IEPs and 504s. Write the services that they receive. Write who lives in their homes. Write if they have siblings in the school or if they have siblings attending other schools. Write who their last teacher was. Write if they live in a shelter or a permanent house. Write if they have two parents. Write a fact that wouldn't be on any of their records. I only have 18 students, so this task was extremely easy for me since I do very well with my social emotional, with my families. But I bet you that Mr. Cata and Mrs. Thieman, who have 400 students more, I bet that they could do this task. So I ask you, Dr. Haynes, could you do this task? Mr. Demakoff, I know you couldn't because you are not in our schools. The New York City District Four Superintendent where I work, she could do this task because she's in our schools with the teachers and the schools, every, the scholars, every single day. Now I'd like everybody, including Dr. Haynes and Mr. Demakoff, to put yourself in my 10th grader shoes. He didn't have a dedicated principal, and a lot fell through the cracks. A lot of extra work was put on me, and my son suffered because of that. Mrs. Thieman has made a difference, not only in the social emotional learning of these scholars, but in the daily operations. Why can't we wait until these current eighth graders who have had Mrs. Thieman for two years move on two more years and evaluate the impact that these scholars are having in the high school? Mrs. Thieman deserves a fair evaluation, just like I'm assuming Dr. Haynes is going to be getting. Moving Mrs. Thieman to an unneeded position will harm not only the current junior high school students, but the incoming eighth graders. Put yourself in my eighth grader shoes. She's walking into a building next year, knowing that she can't even get a wave or a wink or a hug if needed by her favorite person in the whole world. Put yourself in my sixth grader shoes, who's coming to this bigger building and not getting the warm greetings that she has gotten since her days in TJ. Dr. Haynes and Mr. Demakoff, your decisions hurt my kids. Removing Mrs. Thieman is harming the social emotional learning of students, the taxpayers and the, I am a taxpayer and a parent of four, three, who will be in this building next year, and I want my tax money to go to the junior high school principal. It is a needed and wanted position by families and scholars. I have a statement by my daughter that she just texted me. She's in dance right now. She said, "Mrs. Thieman has been the most important person in my school day. She greets me every day and knows when I'm having a bad day or when I'm having a good day. I love all my teachers, but I love that my day starts with Mrs. Thieman. She checks on me all the time. She makes sure that I have had a full and enjoyable junior high school experience. Please don't remove her. My sister will be here next year, and I know that she needs Mrs. Thieman. She needs the warmth and love that she is able to give." So I don't think we got the answer about Dr. Haynes and when his tenure is up or his contract is up, so I don't know if that is something that we are talking about. But I do direct to Mr. Demakoff, who overturned his decision, and say that you need to do what's right and overturn your irresponsible decision. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Christina Ramos.
Christina Ramos, 382 Teaneck Road. I would like to go back to get clarification about the resolution that passed that shouldn't have passed. It was brought to my attention. I don't know the details, or I'm not really sure about the process, but you needed six votes to pass personal resolution, and you only had five. So we're, are we just going to sweep this under the rug or are we going to make it right?
Mrs. Wright, if you, if I can just.
If you'd like me to address that, because I know this has now come up twice. Volunteers are not personnel. So the statute specifically provides that the Board of Education has to approve personnel matters, transferring, hiring, terminating by way of a majority of the full voting membership. Approving volunteers is not the same thing as a personnel matter, regardless of whether the board puts it under their personnel agenda. So it requires only a majority of those votes cast.
Okay. Moving on, I just wanted to know more. I know that there was a plan and there was a presentation. I was mentioned back in March. Now it's June. September's right around the corner. Is Miss Thieman have a secure job to go to as offered come September? If there's no building, nothing has been set up and running for the preschool, is she guaranteed a position come September?
I believe it's the May 4 meeting where she was approved by the Board of Education for the voluntary transfer. The answer is yes.
So in two months, you will have a school up and running for the preschool and a staff set up? Everything's going to be set up over the summer?
Mrs. Ramos, I'm not even sure how to answer that question from all the committee work and the presentations and the plans and the actions and the.
No, I know there's a presentation, but is there an actual structure?
Yeah.
Building, office, where she is going to report to? Is there one?
Yes.
Where is it?
I will give you the same answer that I gave Mr. DeSantis. If you'd like to talk about some of the specifics, please make a time as I.
But I think the community members who.
To come and talk about that.
Who wanted to have Miss Thieman stay as our principal would like to know where she's going. I know that Mr. Demakoff already made his decision to overturn keeping her, which I don't agree with that decision either. However, what is her future? You, you keep saying there's a presentation. You're going to tell me in private. Why can't you tell the community? I, I don't want a private one-on-one. If I ask this question, I'm asking on behalf of myself and parents in the community. So we just want to know. Then come September, you're going to say, well, we didn't get approved for space, and there's no space, and now Miss Thieman has no job. And now we're going to have an added bill to Dr. Bender's bill because possibly, I don't know if you noticed, but she had a lawyer sitting next to her at the last meeting. I mean, the bills keep piling up, and we keep getting things taken away from our children. Not so long ago, our children were sent home last minute because we couldn't provide air conditioning. Why? We had this fixed supposedly a few years ago or two years recently, and now we, we still, it's still not working. Why isn't the air conditioner work, air conditioning working properly? I mean, we're, we're putting our focus into areas that don't need fixing at this moment, but when, but area, other areas that need to be addressed are not. And ever since Dr. Bender fell, I'm sorry, Dr. Bender was sent home, it's been one thing after another. It's just been a snowballing out of control. Bad, one bad decision after another. First, we send home 500,000, I mean, so send back 500,000 early prematurely, and now we still don't have an AC unit, HVAC system working properly, and kids have to be sent home because of that? That's not an excuse to send kids home because there's no AC. You're worried about them having a heat stroke, then fix the AC unit. It's unacceptable. The decisions that are continuing, continuously being made so abruptly with no proper guide or plan. You continue to say we have, well, I see your presentation. I saw the presentation. I don't need more information about presentation. I want to actually know the facts. Where is the building going to be? Who is the staff going to be? Where's, how many children are expected to be there? You have two months. It's not a two years. You have two months.
Thank you for your comments, Ms.
I'll ask the head of buildings and grounds to address your answers as far as the HVAC and the air conditioning.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I'll ask the head of buildings and grounds and also the business administrator to answer your questions about the HVAC and the air conditioning.
Okay, but as leader as this, as leader as the district, you are not aware of what happenings are in our buildings?
I'm very aware, and I said I'd get those answers for you.
You gave which answers to me? What happened to the AC unit a few weeks ago? You don't know?
I will ask the business administrator to give you an answer on that.
How are you?
So Roxy Cosgrove, 322 Fifth Street. I have three boys in the school district, two over at Grant, a seventh grader here. As you keep listening, Miss Thieman is an essential part to the seventh and eighth graders. I did not agree with Mr. Democrat's decision to overturn his decision. I appreciated the board for listening to the community. We felt heard, and it was a surprise when he got overturned. I want to know, how do you, how does Mr. Democrat? how does Mr. Democrat, the Board, expect the high school principal now, Cavins, who just started in January, able to control, facilitate the seventh through 12th grade? Why couldn't we keep Ms. Thehman as seventh through 12 and played with Cavins and thrown her to some position that maybe might not come through? As opposed to jeopardizing our children's safety, their well-being? The high school students were here last meeting. Showed the Board, we proved the Board, that she does not know her high school students. How is she? How do you guys expect her to facilitate the seventh through 12 and not fall through the cracks? You are drowning my child with a program that might not help at all, giving him someone that is not there for the high school right now. So, I wanna know, is it a possibility to consider Ms. Thehman for seven to 12 and move Cavins to the positions that you're giving Ms. Thehman? Is that something that the community should fight for? Is it something that we need to bring to the table? Ms. Thehman has the credentials, has the experience more than Cavins, and we showed you, she does not know our students, cannot keep them safe. Their mental states are gonna fall through. So, I want to know if that is something that we can put on the table.
Those Board resolutions, I'll go back to the May 4th agenda, where the voluntary transfer of Ms. Thehman's. By May 15th, by statute, every district is required to re-approve and reappoint all employees. So, those employees have been reappointed and are in the positions that they will be in as we move into the next school year, starting July 1.
Okay. And how did you expect Ms. Thehman to voluntarily remove herself from the position? How is it a volunteer transfer for her? If the program might, like, I'm misunderstanding. It's a volunteer transfer for Ms. Thehman to leave middle school principal to the pre-K program, correct? That's what you're telling me? Okay. How is it volunteer when Mr. Democrat said the position's not gonna exist? The position is not there, so she doesn't have an option. So, I'm not understanding. How is it volunteering?
So, I am not going to get into personnel issues. I'm not sure I even understand the question. But Mrs. Thehman's resolution was on the same Board agenda as the agenda that Mr. Demakoff and the resolution passed to riff the position. The two happened at the same time.
Okay. So, then can we go back? Is there a way that we can put on an emergency meeting for the Board, emergency something, so we can vote, or you guys can vote, and we show you that Ms. Thehman is more vital to this community from seven to 12 as opposed to Cavins' right now?
I think there are a lot of assumptions with your comments, and the one that's very concerning to me is the ability of Ms. Cavins to create a vision, create a roster of people that she just hired, create a team that will serve nine through 12 to put new positions in place, such as the dean of students, the busing detention coordinator, which title will change, and to ensure that all students are supported and successful, seven through 12.
Okay. And that is great, and I'm glad she did that, but she is working behind the table. And that is great. You can be great on paper. Ms. Thehman is there at every event. She knows all of these students. Put them up here and have them talk about their students and who they know. You had the high school kids here who said they don't even know what she looks like or where she is.
Yes, I'm sorry, but I attended the prom, I attended the junior athletics, the senior athletics, the scholastic award, the awards for other programs and scholarships with Ms. Cavins.
Okay, and do the students know that you are the superintendent? Or did they just see some guy show up? Because when Ms. Thehman walks in the room, everyone knows it's Ms. Thehman who walks in the room.
Yeah. I'm always surprised that I walk down the hallway and people say, "Hi, Dr. Haynes," because people do recognize me.
Adults do. The students know who you are?
I don't go around the district walking into class saying, "Hi, I'm the superintendent."
But you should, and that's what the community is trying to say. We need you guys in our students' lives, and that is what Ms. Thehman does. My up with time.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Melissa Danino?
Hi, good evening. How are you?
Hi, I'm fine. How are you? I didn't get a "Ms."
Miss, how are you?
Much better now, thank you. Melissa Danino, 50 Christie Street in Ridgefield Park. So, as many of you may or may not know, I am a passionate person, especially about retaining the position for the junior high school, specifically for Ms. Thehman. However, I'm not okay with not having any principal for the high school. I don't understand where the logic is in that manner. I understand, Dr. Haynes, that you keep on stating that there's a plan and I've seen it and all of that. I don't understand why when we ask you specifically to give us any kind of information in public forum, where the population is here to get answers, we get nothing. Specifically, not only do we get nothing, we also get smugness from you, which I have to say is quite irritable from a taxpayer. But besides that, as an active parent, I'm in the school community and I cannot support the decision, no matter how it is explained to me in any way. And furthermore, it hasn't been to explain to me at all, not once. So, I can't support it even in that direction, because when I do ask for an explanation, none is given to me. None is given to any parent. And again, when you continuously say it's a volunteer transfer, as stated previously by Ms. Cosgrove, there was no other option. You stated that the position was no longer available and then said, "But here's a fictitious one that we haven't gotten approval for, that there's no building and we can't give you any other information." I just feel like the entirety, and not the Board, because I do appreciate the fact that you have listened to us so much this year, but entirely you, Dr. Haynes, have done nothing but lie. I haven't gotten one straight answer, and I don't feel like you're ever going to give me one. I really have nothing to say. I'm just extremely disappointed in the way that you've handled all of this. It hasn't gone unnoticed by the community, and I hope when we get to vote, everyone votes you out. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening, Miss.
Jay Sean Sadler?
Good evening. Good evening. I would like to read from the Social Justice Resolution dated June 24th, 2020. Whereas the Ridgefield Park Board of Education is committed to ensuring an accessible, inclusive, diverse, and equitable educational environment that respects and embraces students and staff from different social, economic, cultural, linguistic, intellectual, racial, educational, ideological, and religious backgrounds, as well as family compositions, gender, and sexual orientations. And whereas the Ridgefield Park Board of Education stands in solidarity with oppressed peoples in the United States and around the world, and whereas students of color experience a disproportionate impact of standardized tests and other measures of academic achievement, and whereas schools play an active role in shaping the values of future leaders and members of the citizenry that will carry the torch of freedom and justice for all people. And whereas the Ridgefield Park Board of Education recognizes that we have a particular obligation to combat racism, homophobia, antisemitism, and all forms of bias and prejudice through our curricular and educational practices. And whereas the Ridgefield Park Board of Education seeks to emphasize equality and equity in the educational process. Therefore, this is followed by nine action items, good action items. I don't have time to go through all of them, but number nine states that we will get, the community will get regular updates to be provided by the superintendent, and that the aims put forth in this resolution will be met within one year from July 24th, 2020. While I would like to acknowledge that notable efforts have been made by folks like Ms. Puccirelli, Mr. Coletto, Ms. Thehman, just to name some, for which I'm eternally grateful. Their noble individual efforts fall short of meeting the goals set forth in the Social Justice Resolution. Two years later, it is clear that our district has utterly failed to live up to the platitudes expressed in the resolution. My children shared with me some quotes, some direct quotes from experiences that they and their peers have had in school. I want you to hear them, please. These are quotes that they've heard. "You know, for someone who has such dark skin, you should really go back to your country." I bet she really knows how to twerk because she's Latina. I really hope it, referring to a person, I really hope it dies in a ditch one day. Of course, she's an effing F slur referring to homosexuals. "Go back to your country, like this place isn't for you, girl." "You're gay? Someone's going to come around and change your mind about that." "She's never gonna be a guy. What a effing tranny." "Go back to Africa inward." "Oh, you self-harm? You're gay, right? So, you're playing Fruit Ninja on yourself." "Kill yourself." The world doesn't need F slurs referring to gay people. I hate F slurs so much. If you are an F slur, you should just kill yourself. They've also experienced quotes from teachers, like, "Slave owners were kind and treated their slaves like family." Or they've heard their teachers refer to immigrants as aliens. Clearly unacceptable. I also would like to note my own experience with even members of the Board. I heard a Board member tonight, Mr. Verselli, I hope you're listening, state that he never heard anyone complain about Mr. Gibbons. Am I someone? Do I matter? Because I have complained about Mr. Gibbons. Mr. Verselli, on another occasion, quoted Nelson Mandela, because he wanted people to play football against the advice of medical professionals during a pandemic. He quotes Nelson Mandela, Mr. Verselli. Nice job.
Mr. Sadler?
We have also, excuse me, excuse me.
Oh, no, you just came after me.
Please hold my time.
Hold it. Exactly how you did.
Continue speaking. Thank you. Please hold my time? Thank you very much. Mr. Fernandez has attempted to silence me. He discriminatorily applies the time rule. If you guys notice, I came up to speak and he says, "Are you gonna obey the time, Mr. Sadler?" He didn't say that to anybody else. He said it to me, though. That's very interesting, Mr. Fernandez. Also, I'm sorry, I'm speaking. Thank you. I appreciate you. Thank you so much. So, he's a stickler for rules when it comes to me. But when it comes to people from his good old boys network, like Mr. Gibbons, who clearly break the rules, right? It was a clear restriction on his duties as football, as related to football. He broke that rule. He's not a stickler for that. He votes for him to do it again. Very interesting. And then Mr. Gibbons himself, who encounters a black father who's trying to address him about doing something that I perceive, right or wrong, right? I have a right. I perceive he's doing something wrong. I approach him peacefully, and he says maybe he has a gun or a knife. And I want the community to note Mr. Gibbons' behavior even now as I'm speaking. He does this all the time, very infantile, juvenile, like a petulant child. This is how he behaves. Please make note of that. "Just like me," he says, very cowardly. Thank you. So, for me, I want you all to know, like, I don't wanna hear platitude, right? I experienced all of these things for me constitute racism. This is the way I experience it. Yeah, that's how I experience it, for sure, right? So, I don't want to hear, like, empty platitudes about what's gonna happen. I wanna see action. I wanna see policy that's going to create systematic change that we need. I feel like for some of you here, this is a matter of intellect. It's a matter of a trivial matter that we kinda talk about over coffee, you know, a box would be checked. But this is my life. This is my children's life. This is very real to me and to many members of this community. And I fully expect you all to take it seriously, and if you don't, we're gonna continue to do everything peaceful, legal, moral, and ethical to hold you fully accountable. Thank you very much.
Leslie Gottlieb?
President Fernandez, can I just speak real quick since I was accused of whatever I was accused of there? Is that okay? Just real quick, I just wanna make clear that I said that the children and the parents of those children, sir. So, I was making a thing about everybody that he dealt with. That was my point. And at the time, I was not fighting for football. So, you definitely were not anywhere listening. I was actually fighting for track because there were kids that had opportunity to get scholarships that ran, and they were denied that because, one, at the time, there was one cafeteria worker that had COVID, and the sports got shut down. But when it came to the winter sports, they were easily allowed indoors with numbers higher. I stuck up for the kids to have their SATs. I stuck up for the kids to get a lot of things before that, other than sports. I have always stuck up for the kids, and that is why I quoted that. So, please, come talk to me. I will clearly talk to you and tell you my views, but don't accuse me of things that you don't know what you're talking about. Thank you.
Okay. Leslie Gottlieb, 464A Liberty Street, Little Ferry. One of the things that comes up at a lot of these meetings, you talk about the village of Ridgefield Park, but you do overlook the several, the quantity of students from Little Ferry who do go to Ridgefield Park High School. They're part of your village, too. Now, that being said, many nights, it's been myself and Nick as the only Little Ferry resident, whether I've been on the Board in Little Ferry or whether I've just been a citizen. And one of the things is that Ms. Thehman had as a responsibility, was working on the transition plan for our eighth graders from Little Ferry to the high school, whether it was giving them exposure to it, whether it was bringing them to events, just in general, helping them get ready to come here and encouraging them to come here. Not, you know, some of our kids do go off to the Bergen County system. That's great if you have the academics to fit there, to pass the test. But a lot of our kids, once they decide, "I'm not going to Ridgefield Park," they'll bail out, they'll go to the Catholic system for the most part. They'll go to Paramus Catholic or somewhere else. So, you're keeping, taking them away from your school. Now, now that Ms. Thehman is going to be not the middle school principal and not apparently involved in the transition planning, I know she's worked with Mr. Scarfield, who is gonna take over that responsibility? Is that gonna be another one on Ms. Cavins' jobs? I think that you need somebody who will be dedicated to the middle school, whether you call it a principal, a dean, a teacher, and we'd like to know the plan. And Little Ferry would like to know the plan because it affects our students. We wanna have them have a smooth transition. I had a son who was social and into sports in 2017 when he came over, but not everybody's so fortunate. And I do talk up the early college every chance I get because my son benefited from that. He's now a senior at Montclair State, and he only graduated here last year. But you've gotta come up with a clear plan for all these things that Ms. Thehman did, not just the transitioning from Little Ferry, but the middle school kids. Because I know, looking back at our middle school and looking back at my son, and our middle school goes five to eight, they need that support. They need that transition. Yes, in our case, it's just going to the same building now, but it still is something that a school district has to be responsible for, and you need to lay out a clear plan, and it needs to be communicated to the community, both communities, for the parts that affect both communities. Thank you.
Thank you for your attendance.
So I'd also like you to know that Mr. Scarfield and I frequently talk and realize there are many opportunities that we can do better to help out that transition, which aren't currently happening.
Okay. Moving on to unfinished business.
President Fernandez, I'm sorry, we had three and I already promoted one.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Good evening.
Mrs. Rafferty?
Yes.
Good evening.
Yes, John Raftery, fifty-four Euclid Avenue, Ridgefield Park.
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Looks like we lost them. Good evening. Good evening.
Jennifer Leuzey, three Monet Street, Little Ferry, New Jersey.
Evening, Ms. How are you?
Good, how are you? One thing I'd like to address is it's very unsettling hearing everybody talk so meanly regarding Christopher Gibbons. I've known him, I'm gonna say over twenty years. He's an upstanding individual. And I think it's very disgusting how people are criticizing him. Children love him. They look up to him. And he is an icon. He went to the Ritual Park School System, and he's only out there to help the children. And I think everybody needs to take that into consideration, that the children are what's important, not the egos of everybody else. Number two, regarding Diane Theeman. I come from Ritual Park, and I currently live in Little Ferry. My children in Little Ferry's school system. Diane is a liaison. How are the kids gonna be transitioned over? I have a freshman who went to the Ritual Park, actually, I'm sorry, went to Little Ferry, barely made it out of Little Ferry. She was introduced to Diane Theeman. Diane was, I'm gonna say like her baby blanket. She's there every single day. She sees her, she's at the seventh and eighth grade doors, even though my daughter is a freshman. She goes to the seventh and eighth grade doors and meets Diane Theeman and Mr. Toddros. The two of them are what has gotten my daughter through the school system this year. Not only that, but she looks forward to seeing them. And she likes the feeling of security she has with both of those individuals. Third, I'm sorry, but Mrs. Demakoff, I really wish you would overturn your decision. Ms. Theeman is an amazing person. And losing her in this position is damaging to the children, and the children are the ones that are suffering. My daughter is in seventh grade, going to eighth grade in Little Ferry. And she knows Ms. Theeman already. And she is looking forward to seeing Ms. Theeman. And unfortunately, Ms. Theeman's not there, my daughter suffers from anxiety and social anxiety and things like that. She wants that security blanket. Well, the other children want that security blanket, too. And you're ripping that away from them. Whereas I do know Ms. Kevin's, I grew up with her. I have nothing against her. But these children know Diane Theeman. They are in her office daily. My daughter, who is a freshman, goes to Ms. Theeman's office, goes to Nurse Erin's office. When there's an issue, she goes and sees them. It is going to hurt these children tremendously if she's taken away. Thank you.
Thank you. Is this the last comment?
How you doing?
Good evening.
Carl Marts, uh, two twenty Preston Street. So, you know, coming to live into this town, you have your doubts in regard to what's going on, you know, the last time I was here, I think it was like five years ago. And I finally get to meet you, Barry Haines, uh, because we had a conversation over the phone, and not a good one either. And sitting down there, just watching you smirk, watching YouTube, whatever it is that you're doing on your computer, really gives that sense of how you approach to people visually and whatever it is. I know there's a lot of attacks on you, whatever the case, I don't know what your history is, and I honestly don't care. But the moment that I came to you for help for my kid and you didn't want to help. And supposedly, as acting superintendent, you overpower everything to be able to help the kids. At the end of the day, I think we're here to help the kids. So when you denied it, and then you asked me still over the phone, what do you expect me to do? I answered back to you and I said, help my child. You know? All the children are in COVID. They were behind a computer. Social anxiety, all that good stuff, that all of a sudden now they come into sports or whatever the case may be. And, you know, if one is late to go ahead and put in an application or information was not given correctly, that's your opportunity to say, hey, I'm the superintendent, let me help you out. But by you not doing that, already gives me the feel that I can understand why you're not wanted. You know, once again, when I talk to you, I look at you straight in the eyes, and, you know, you're not looking straight at me, which is cool. I understand that. You know, here in town, I like the town because it's nice and quiet, but all this politics BS that's going on, unfortunately, it's, it sucks. You know, some of the members here, they probably know me, and they know I tell it like it is, because unfortunately, there's always a taboo situation going on here. Now, I'm a proud parent also of a sixth grader that just graduated from Roosevelt. And I remember Cata saying, oh, uh, Barry Hines is right there. And I'm like, where? Where? I understand that you're saying that you were trying to do a song and dance to introduce yourself and stuff like that. Well, actually, yeah, it's always good to introduce yourself because I'm actually asking some instructors, who the hell is this Barry Hines? And nobody can actually point out who it is. Or maybe you were just there for a quick second and bounced. Personality, image, I think positivity, to be able to do what is supposed to be part of the town, the taxpayers' dollars and everything like that, is something that I think a lot of people here take very serious, especially I do. I pay like eight, nine thousand dollars in taxes, but now it's like, Jesus Christ, man, is it worth every single dollar that I'm paying for here in the education system of my frickin' child that's coming over here? So now, he's coming into seventh grade, and we're hearing beautiful things about Ms. Theeman, and all of a sudden, she's not gonna be here. Like, what the hell? You know, once again, I don't know the, the whole backstory behind it, but it's like, why are we getting rid of somebody that makes a difference in the school system? To all of a sudden, you know, doing something completely different where the kids are not feeling comfortable. The shooting in Texas, I agreed with the young lady that said something like that. I want my kid to feel safe. You don't know what my kid gone through. You don't even know what I've gone through as a child. And I'm trying not to portray that to my kid. I want to induce that positivity when they come into the school, like Mr. Cata does. Is there somebody gonna be outside the door saying, hey, so and so, how are you? Welcome back. Hey, you know what, you're seventh grade? Oh, great, good place to be in. I mean, I think we try to be able to believe in situations like this as parents feel so strongly to come over and go ahead and voice their opinion out here. But like I said, I was here five years ago to speak out on another instructor, and I'm glad she's doing well. You know, but the thing is that there are some people from the board member here that honestly probably don't give two craps on what we say because you can see it when you're sitting down on the table. I wish I could just film you guys. And once again, I'm generalizing because I'm not pinpointing on who it is. But have a little bit more of empathy. You know, when somebody comes up here and really, you know, talk their brains out or really give a rhyme and reason in regards of what they feel that the town deserves as a resident. You know what? I think a little smile, but not the cynical smile like you were doing today, Mr. Barry. A little smile on comprehending on the person that's behind the microphone goes a long way. Goes a long way. I also volunteer for the town. And guess what? You know, when there's an emergency out there, I'm the one that's waking up at three o'clock in the Godforsaken morning to go and help. But let's, let's have a little empathy, you know, for, for, for all the parents that are trying to be able to make a voice on what makes sense in this Godforsaken community. I came from Hudson County, trust me. It's a small town, but the politics are not out there like it is here. Once I came here, oh, my God, and I know some of you are shaking your heads, the politics here are horribly bad. And it sucks to know that. Once again, I volunteer in town, and I know the back part of it. And it stinks because now I have to portray this to my kid and letting him know what's wrong and what's right. But then I gotta lie to him because we gotta let them know that our town is a safe place and it's a good bet on them to be here with education. I'll leave that for you guys.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
While we're waiting for the next speaker, I did want to speak to the two Roosevelt promotion sessions today, which were amazing. Uh kindergarten this morning and sixth grade this afternoon, of which I stayed for the entire show to watch our kids shine. And that's what those are about, to honor, to support, to watch them shine, to enjoy their entertainment through music. And then to watch their success as they go on to the next grade. So thank you because I enjoyed those presentations as much as you did.
President Fernandez, can I just say one thing? Here. Thank you. We had a couple of comments from the community members about the recent shooting in Uvalde. And I just wanted to point out on agenda, item FI two ninety-one, we just passed tonight to have a full comprehensive school safety and security assessment done of our district. So I don't want, of all the concerns, I wanted to point that out because I think it's extremely important to know that this board takes security very seriously.
And if I might add, the consultant will come in, visit every building, check every door, and give us a written report on security.
Moving on to unfinished business. Moving on to new business. Faculties and programs, trustee Rodriguez.
I so, oh, sorry, I so move FP one thirty-nine and FP one forty.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Gomes, did you second?
Think I was beaten by Mr. Cathcart.
Any comments or questions on FP one three nine to one four zero? Hearing none? Mr. Phytros?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbons?
I'm an abstention from FP one forty, and I just wanted to comment, I always wanted to go to this cemetery to check it out. It sounds strange, but it's a cemetery of Native American and African Americans, and it's a very historic site on forty-six Little Ferry. So, great job on setting that up, whoever did.
Join the field trip tomorrow.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Dr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Verselli?
Yes.
Mr. Cathcart?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
President Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Are we okay with that resolution? Yep, personnel, um trustee Gibbons, if you don't mind moving.
I so moved uh P two eighty-four to P two eighty-eight.
Second.
Any comments or questions on FP two eighty-four?
I just have a comment about the new personnel agenda and also the personnel that we've approved tonight. We, we've heard that teachers want to leave the district, but there's a reason why, you know, there, for some reason, I think tonight was mentioned that one of them is moving to another state. But we do have a lot of substitute teachers that want to be in this district. And then we also, tonight, we approved the math position, which is a classroom teacher who wants to stay in this district and who wants to be the math coach. So obviously, she applied for this position. And we have an interventionist, also FP two eighty-seven, who is a current employer, correct, Ms. Ms. Han? She's a current employer, so she wants to stay in this district. And then we have FP two eighty-eight, a person who substitute, who applied for a full-time position. So we have a lot of people that want to stay in our district.
I, and I'd add the science teacher, too, who is moving from Grant to the middle school. We have a lot of teachers who want to stay in the district.
Where do we leave off with the resolution, Nancy? You just need to call a roll, right?
Yes. Mr. Phytros?
Yes. Yes.
Are you abstaining on any?
Um, if I need to abstain from the one, I'm not, yeah, if there's an abstention necessary, then yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Dr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Verselli?
Sorry, keeps on, keep on clicking, yes.
Mr. Cathcart?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbons?
Yes.
President Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion pass.
George, can I have a moment? There's a young man that goes to school here, his name is Hugo Wang. And through the efforts of a few people, he's been appointed to the Naval Academy. We just found that out last week.
Well, congratulations, Sam. Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.